Okay, I'm calling this meeting a city council to order. It is 7:47. Eddie, what'd you call the roll?
Cobb.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Plash.
Here.
All right, everybody's here, so no need to excuse anybody. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I motion to amend the agenda to add resolutions 170, 2024, 171, 2024, and 172, 2024 to first readings only.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Next time, ask approval of the minutes from August 12th. Everybody read every word? All right, no objections there, okay. Communications from the mayor. See how fast that happens? I said, "Do you see how fast that happens?"
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. I think the first thing that I'd like to talk about this evening is the tragedy that occurred last week. Just want to take this moment again to express my deepest sympathies and sorrow over the loss of Christian Thomas. As some of you may not know, depending on what your attention has been on, there was an officer-involved shooting last Thursday evening, and a young man was killed. And right now, just in case council or the public does not have this information, the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation has taken over that particular investigation into exactly what occurred. And I know that now is not a time for anybody to be feeling a high degree of patience. But we have to try to have patience with the process and recognize that, right now, this is out of the City of Cleveland Heights hands and in the state of Ohio's hands to determine exactly what happened in that criminal investigation. And I know that it's going to take a lot longer than any of us would prefer. But in the meantime, I'll just ask all of us in this city to actively and intentionally refrain from the rumor mongering that can occur in a situation like this. It is okay to say, "I don't know." Right now, there's a lot "I don't know" about that situation, and I'm waiting for information. And it's okay for every single one of you to say, "I don't know," instead of, "Well, I heard," or "Somebody said." Because right now, we're waiting for real information about a very, very serious situation. Again, to the family, you have my deepest condolences. So with that, I think I'd like to take another moment to issue some congratulations. And so I wanted to say congratulations to Director Hicks of StartRight CDC for his acceptance into the Jack Joseph and Morton Mandell Foundation Community Development Leadership Program, this cohort of individuals. This is a program that is headed up by former Cleveland Mayor Mike White. And I did want to point out that this is sort of a follow-up to the participation of Mr. Hicks III in the first cohort of the Cleveland Development Advisors Equitable Development Initiative. And I just wanted to point out, this is a great example of the kinds of organizational and professional capacity building and development that we hope for in our local CDC ecosystem here in Cleveland Heights. So I just want to pass on that news. I think ultimately, it will be a benefit certainly to the Noble Neela and the Caledonia areas. Now, last, we have what seems like a very full contingent of people in council chambers tonight. And based on the order of operations here in my comments, I think you know what was probably top of mind for me this evening. And I recognize that, you know, what is top of mind for me is not always, you know, the most important thing in everybody else's day or life. And I recognize that every single one of our community members' interests and priorities are important. And so I want to take a moment to address what many of you are here for. And that is, I believe, based on information that somebody gave me at a block party last week, the indoor pool at Cleveland Heights High School. So I brought a few aids with me. These aids are sections of the Ohio Revised Code and a section or two from the policy manual of a couple different school districts. Now, there's a bit of history here. And so I hope that, in the interest of informing some of the people who are here tonight before they maybe make public comment that is misinformed, I would like to provide a little bit of information if the council president would indulge just a bit of time to go through a bit of history.
How much time are we talking about?
Hopefully, less than five minutes.
That seems reasonable.
All right. So I became mayor January 1, 2022. And at that time, we were coming out of a pandemic. One of the results of the pandemic is that the high school pool was closed. That occurred, I believe, in late March, early April in 2020. Now, at that time, the school had just rebuilt its high school. The school district had just rebuilt its high school. They were working to reengage in an agreement with the city that they had, you know, worked through for a while before that, several years. There's some history before that, when the school made the pool available absent city intervention, but that's a bit further in the past. But at the point where the school district began having conversation with the city again in 2022, I asked a simple question. Why can't the school district do this itself? And I got an answer. The answer was, "We are legally prohibited by Ohio law from hiring lifeguards in support of a community use program." And I said, "Oh, okay, can you share with me?" Because I feel like it's my responsibility to do actual due diligence, especially in the formation of a new government and the resumption potentially and sort of reframing of relationships. So I asked for a little bit of backup. Could you show me the Ohio Revised Code section that speaks to and supports the claim that you are prohibited? I asked that in 2022, and it's now 2024, and I have never received an answer. I was told that there is a legal opinion, which then became a memo that expressed, at first, a clear prohibition, and then that there was some gray area, and they weren't sure. That story has changed over time. I do want to say, and I welcome the commentary this evening, but I fear that many of you are about an hour late to the actual meeting that you should be attending tonight. And that took place over on Miramar at 7:00 PM. The school district, the board, had a meeting this evening. Because I think, at this point, it's become very clear in my research that the school district does, in fact, not have a prohibition in creating a community use recreational program for the pool that they own. And I'd like to point out that I do have citations that I would like to share, at the very least. I know that, right now, in all likelihood, those of you who have signed up to make public comment will not change your mind about the public comment that you're making. That's the environment that we're in now. This information may not sway you. I understand that. But I feel it's my responsibility to provide it to you anyway. Now, the first bit of the Revised Code that I found that led me to question the claim that the school district was prohibited from engaging in a community use program for their pool and staffing it under their own general fund budget was Section 331376 of the Ohio Revised Code, "School premises available for educational and recreational purposes." The restriction is that such occupation should not seriously infringe upon the original and necessary uses of such properties. But it provides pretty clearly that the school district has the authority to make their facilities available for community use absent any other organization's intervention. Second, 331377 of the Ohio Revised Code, there's use of school premises for public meetings and entertainments. And I believe that this also provides for a similar allowance. Now, I think that the thing that I most recently found, I don't know how it took me so long to find it, was Section 331358, "Supervision of social and recreational work, employment of instructors." Simply says, "Boards of education of city, exempted village, or local school districts may, upon nomination of the superintendent of schools, employ persons to supervise, organize, direct, and conduct social and recreational work in such school district." Now, I found these, and I am by no means an expert on the Ohio Revised Code, but I found these, and they point to a particular determination about whether or not the school district can hire some lifeguards, schedule them, staff their pool, and make it freely available to you. They wouldn't even have to charge you. They could, but they wouldn't have to. But the thing that really brought it home to me was the experience of both learning about Beechwood City Schools' indoor pool use program, and the fact that there are Cleveland Heights residents right now who have memberships that they purchase from Beechwood City Schools to swim in the high school pool that, as it turns out, I swam in as a high schooler. So I went to Beechwood. The City of Beechwood, and I confirm this with the mayor, the City of Beechwood does not play a role in either the memberships, or the staffing, or the cleaning, or the security, or anything related to the indoor pool use program that Beechwood City Schools engages in. And I looked at the financials of Beechwood City Schools to take a look at. Maybe there's some special fund that they're using to fund this program. Maybe the reason why they can do this is because their entire budget for this program is paid for out of membership fees. And I learned that it was not. I learned that about 90% of the program costs were from general fund dollars. That's regular old tax dollars to this.
Mayor, we're about at six minutes here, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for indulgence. I think one thing that I, this would be a call to action for all of you, and I don't necessarily think that you will, but I hope that maybe some of you do. Ask the school district why they believe it's impossible to create a program and staff it in the exact same way that Beechwood City Schools does. And they might tell you that they're prohibited by Ohio law. And I would ask you to ask them which law. And then, most specifically, from the policy manual of the city schools here, and the policy manual of the City of Beechwood Schools, in adult and community education, there is a notable difference between these two sections. And most of the sections are the same throughout the policies and procedures because they sort of boilerplate them. I understand your impatience. I'm sorry, I'm almost done. So in the adult and community education section of CHUH policy manual, it says, "With regard to community education, the board may provide programs." And the sentence stops there. In Beechwood, it says, "With regard to community education, the board may provide programs in the evening and day for the purpose of meeting the avocational, recreational, cultural interests of the community." Now, that little difference might be the way that our Board of Education can make a slight change in their own policies in order to allow themselves to hire several lifeguards, which they have done in the past and could do in the future, and then staff their pool that they control. And I firmly believe that if the school district can do this on their own, then it is incumbent on me to ensure that they do. And I hope that you will join me in asking them to take that step, learn how Beechwood performs that duty, and then do the same. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. President? I feel like it's important for me to note that regardless of whether there's a prohibition, Resolution 159, 2022 lawfully authorized and directed the mayor to negotiate a facility use agreement with the CHUH school district.
All right, noted.
Mr. President.
We're going to move on. I'm going to turn it over, actually, to our council vice president here. I know that everybody in here is probably also interested in what's going on at Severance. And our council vice president, and who is also the planning chair, will introduce our next guest.
Thank you so very much, President Kuta. I would like to bring forward our next guest to give a presentation on Severance Center. Impact, Ryan Porter. Would you please come forward and tell us all about your ideals and what you have to tell our community regarding Severance that we have been waiting so desperately for?
Thank you. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm usually loud enough that I don't... Raise it a little bit? Okay. All right, well, feel free to yell at me, because I like getting yelled at. Thank you for everyone's attendance tonight. And I understand that I may not be the topic of the hour, but hopefully, I can keep your attention for a couple minutes.
Severance has been a big topic.
Yeah, fair enough. Understood. Well, thank you to the council, to mayor, everybody in the community for being here this evening. Again, my name is Ryan Porter. I am a managing partner at a firm called Impact Collective. We are a development firm who typically focuses on, actually, revitalization of suburban downtowns. And we've taken a foray into revitalizing former mall sites as well. So we're extremely excited to be here in Cleveland. The reason I'm here in Cleveland Heights tonight is because I actually have a prior relationship with the planning director, Mr. Eric Zamp. I know him from a prior life out on the East Coast. And through a colleague, he contacted us and said, you know, "Are you guys still doing what you do? We have this mall that would really be interested in you taking a look at." So that was about 12 months ago. And here I am, 12 months later, after nine-plus months of negotiating with the owner and doing due diligence. And now, we're starting our process. So I want to talk to you a little bit about us, a little bit about what we do, a little bit about my relationship with the owner, and some of the steps that we're going to be taking, and my desire to collaborate with everyone in this room and beyond. So, you know, we believe that economic development and land use are key to the creation of any healthy community, right? So land use and the use of real estate and the rules around real estate can be leveraged to create great economic developments. But the best way in which that's done is through public-private partnerships. So typically, most of the communities in which we work and we actually partner with the municipality, because a lot of the times, the municipality owns the land that's underutilized and needs to be redeveloped. In this case, it's a little different in that a private owner owns that land. But you've got a city here that's willing to partner and that believes that this is a huge priority for this community. So that public-private partnership mantra still exists in these efforts here. Just a quick kind of about us. You know, we pride ourselves in our expertise in community engagement. It is a huge piece of what we do. We discovered, after years of, you know, working in the development fields, all of us and our team, that developers oftentimes do it wrong. You know, they often come into communities and say, "Hey, here's what I do. This is the widget I build. Take it or leave it." And that's really not how communities work, right? You need to learn about a community, how they live, how they operate, what they're missing, what they need, earning trust, right? And I pride myself on doing that. You're not going to trust me tonight. But when I come back over and over again and meet all of you over and over again, I'm hoping that we can earn some trust with each other. But infrastructure expertise, zoning expertise, there's something in New York where you study impacts of very large development. It doesn't exist, actually, in Ohio. But we're going to be doing a lot of those same studies here because we want to make sure we understand anything that we propose in concert with the city and the community is something that this city needs. And we understand the impacts of all that, right? What happens to the roads? What happens to the sewers? What happens to the water when we do these certain things? All these important things, schools, right? So we've worked in multiple communities. We've been involved in development and entitlement of over 25 million square feet. And we've raised over 120 million in state and federal dollars for our projects, right? Which are huge components of a lot of these projects because our goal here is to make sure that the city doesn't have to step up to the plate here, right? We want to make sure that the state and the county and all these other players and the federal government step up to the plate to help make this project happen in concert with the private development community. You know, New Rochelle is one of our biggest projects. It's a city just outside of New York City. And the sites that are being highlighted right now are examples of city-owned parcels that were part of our deal with the city in New Rochelle that became the buildings on the right-hand side. So what's important to understand about that is we're taking parcels that were vacant, underutilized parcels, driving zero economic development, right? And bringing them back on the tax rolls and bringing them to a useful life, right? So we're creating safety. We're creating things that people need, housing, retail, commercial space, all those types of things. And we're doing it on underutilized land, similar to what we see across the street right now, right? Tax revenues, right? This is a graph of the tax revenue creation from our New Rochelle project, right? New Rochelle was looking at $9.8 million in tax revenues at the time. And that is now up to $1.2 billion, right? So the numbers are astronomical when you bring... Now, that's 32 projects, right? That's a little different. And scale-wise, the city in New Rochelle is different. But if you look at kind of this underutilized parking structure on the right-hand corner, now it becomes buildings that are generating revenue and providing housing, right? Scale is different everywhere, right? Some places, it might be a two stories. Some places, it might be 40 stories. Some places, it might be... Every place is different. And we need to learn what is right for the city of Cleveland Heights. And we don't know that yet. So I'm just giving you an example of a place that we've worked where we've actually created a lot of value, and a lot of value in tax revenues. But it takes time, right? It all takes time. It takes hard work from all of us. What I mentioned earlier is process before plan. So again, you know, our goal is to come in here and do a lot of learning. I spent today, you know, like I've spent a lot of my days here thus far in my first three trips, digging through archives, learning about plans, learning about infrastructure, all the boring stuff that nobody finds sexy, I have to learn, right? So, you know, what's going on underground? What are our limitations? What do we have to be worried about, right? So I'm doing a lot of that research right now. And along with that, I need to be doing a lot of that community research. So if you folks want to get involved and want to work with me, I want to work with you. So if you have some time, I'd love to spend some time, right? So that's my offer. And it's going to take all of us, right, to make this happen. It really does kind of take the village to make these great things happen. So I'm interested in working with all of you. So that process before plan is really important. And the bottom of that graphic is kind of a process in our crowdsourcing where people post ideas of uses they want to see in these future sites. And then they garner support from other community members to like those uses, right? You don't want to support a use that only has, like, two people in the community like them, right? But if you have a lot of people liking that use, right, that's something we can look into and spend time and money on researching and figuring out the feasibility of it. If the idea is not feasible, we get creative. How do we make your idea feasible, right? What are the things that we do to make something that you want to see happen, happen? Zoning and flexibility. So a huge piece of, again, creating economic development through land use is zoning. What are the rules of the road that you set in place to create a great place, to allow the uses that everybody wants to see, and to create flexible zoning so that the market can react where the market is at, right? The worst thing in the world, in the development world, is to set up a plan, take years to get it all approved, and then find out the market has shifted. Maybe you set up a plan for a hotel, and now nobody wants to go to a hotel or finance a hotel, right? So creating flexibility and picking a box of uses that can fit into this pie, and knowing that this is the amount of uses that we're allowing, and this is how it can develop, but allowing that flexibility of the market to decide what goes where when is super important to meeting the market where it's at, right? If you don't do that, right, you can get stuck in scenarios where you've planned for something that is obsolete, right? And that's not how things progress. Good place-making drives economics, right? Creating this great place, a place you want to be. Probably a lot of you in this room remember going to Severance when it was a healthy, really exciting place to be, right? The mall was exciting. It was a place you gathered. It was a place you saw friends. It was a place you enjoyed ice cream, whatever you did there. I think council president was telling me about ice cream there, I believe. And, you know, we want to create that feeling now and in the future for Severance, but it's going to be in a different format, right? The world has changed, right? The mall concept has changed, right? But we can still create that great gathering place where people can come and enjoy, meet with community, and live, and work, and shop, and play. All that stuff is possible still, just in a different format. But again, it won't be easy. Expediter approvals. So a lot of the stuff that we do is we set up this zoning so that investors and other developers and people around the country pay attention to us, and they say, "Wow, this is a place that has its act together," right? They've come to an agreement as a community, as a city, and as a developer to set up a system in place where we know we can get in the ground quickly, right? We don't have to get bogged down because they've agreed upfront, this is how the whole thing should get set up, right? And by doing that, you can attract massive amounts of investment. All the stuff I showed you in New Rochelle, 30-plus projects occurred over a 10-year period that are either built, being built, or approved, right? That's unheard of, right? To get that kind of stuff done in that period of time. And that was because we shouted out to the market, "We've got our act together, right? And we're all getting along," right? That's what people want to say. Market feasibility. I'm not, you know, we do a lot of planning and zoning work, but we are developers. So we're making sure along the way that everything that we're designing and working on with you and the city actually has feasibility to it, can get built, right? Because the worst thing in the world is us to get all excited about something and then not be able to build it, right? Now, everybody's disappointed, and they've gotten their hopes up, and it's not going to happen, right? So that's huge. And I talked about how us having our act together can actually attract dollars and support from other state and federal agencies, which is huge. Our partnership with NAMDAR. So you may have heard of NAMDAR. They are the owners of the site, the majority, I should say, of the site. There are other owners. Our partnership was set up in a way in which I have a period of time. I have about 20 months, and it's counting down. I have about 17 left, 17 and a half left, where I have to put in place new zoning and create new land use approvals and get on the same page with all of you in the city, right? And if I can do that and create that value that that creates by putting that new zoning in place and meet the goals that I've agreed to with NAMDAR, then they, in our partnership, are forced to put the land in as part of the equity into these projects to get built, right? So that was the only way that I could get them to the table, to a deal that made sense for both parties, right? If I wanted to buy it, they would say, "I'm here. I would be down here." It wouldn't work, right? So I said, "Look, you can get people with sticks, or you can get people with carrots." I went the carrot route, and we have a partnership, right? We're learning to trust each other as well. So we'll see how it goes, right? But I'm spending my time and my money and my expertise here to work with you folks. And the truth of the matter is, if we're on the same page, there's not a lot that NAMDAR would have to, would say no to, right? Because then it's an uphill battle for them, right? Why would they say no if everybody's on the same page to get something done, right? So I have to show them the economics. But I believe if we all get on the same page, we will be able to show them the economics. This is like extremely impossible to read, but this is something that I will go over with everybody if they agree with me. This is kind of our development schedule, and it's broken up into all sorts of categories called discovery, which is what I'm in right now, which is meeting... called discovery, which is what I'm in right now, which is meeting with boards and commissions and council members and community members and departments. I had a meeting with DPW today, right? All these folks that I need to learn from, you know, state agencies, county agencies, transit authorities, all these folks that I need to spend time with. And there's more on that, right, public people. Then, you know, we get into, you know, working with the existing leaseholders like Dave's and all these folks out there that we want to make sure are part of the plan, right? And are working with us, right? And we're really excited to collaborate with all them. Then we get into what we call our RAP process, which is where we put together a revitalization action plan, which we're hoping to have done by the end of this year, beginning of next year. And then all of next year is basically spent redoing the zoning, right? So 2020, the rest of 2024 will be most of my discovery process and then reporting on that. And then all of 2025 is supposed to be our zoning process because I have to have this done by the beginning of 26, right? So I need all of you to get behind me and we all need to work together. We're not going to get along all the time. You're going to disagree with me here and there, I know that. But I know if we work well together and we are transparent with each other, that will make some great things happen here. The initial phases of the development will occur likely on the, what we call the Walmart movie theater side of the site, right? So the side where Walmart and the movie theater and those two parking lots will be the initial phases of the development. That in and of itself might be three to four phases of development, right? So we've got a lot of work to do here. It could be 20 years of build-out throughout this process, but we want to see exciting things happening and groundbreaking in 2026. And if we want to see that happen, we all have to work together, like I said. I hope that was fast enough. It was a lot of information. Thank you for your time.
This is a tough crowd. That's good. Questions from council. My goodness. Oh, there we go.
I'll just say thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for coming and looking at Severance, something that's been a sore eye for a very long time that we really, really need help with. So I appreciate that. I look forward to working with you through our committee and through our TAG Advisory Committee as well. So when you come back in town, we will definitely meet and get together and put some dates together. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Vice President Russell.
So I hope I'm not the only one with a question. And this is a pretty broad question, but I think it gets to the heart of the matter when you said, you know, why would NAMDAR not do this if there's this, you know, great agreement?
Sure.
It seems to me the hardest part of your charge is that you're going to go out to the community and you're going to get a lot of input. And I don't know what that's going to be right now. But there's a chance, at least, that what the community wants won't be the most revenue-producing type of development that's available out there.
Sure.
And so how do you balance what Cleveland Heights wants and needs with NAMDAR's financial?
Requirements.
Needs to make, you know, profit, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, pretty easy transparency, right? So if someone has an idea and they want to see that idea and we all get behind that idea, but we realize that that is not a real revenue-generating or value-creating idea, right? Then we're going to explain why it's not and we're going to come up with solutions as to how we still get to what they need, right? Or maybe we decide that we need to change directions. But that transparency is what I mean. Pick an example, right? I'm going to say it because we're all in a room of pool people, right? Everybody wants a public swimming pool, right? So let's just say there's a want for a public swimming pool, right? And we decide that we can't dedicate all these acres to public swimming pools, right? Maybe there's multiple pools wanted, right? Then we're going to say to folks, okay, this is what we need to achieve on a per-acreage value, right? We're not getting there with these pools, but maybe we can go to this grant program or the state has this program or we could finance it through some sort of gym that wants to come in. I don't have the answers to that right now, live, but we will find the way to make it feasible and everybody's going to have to compromise and work together, right? I actually don't believe, and I'm trying in my life to not negotiate to the lowest common denominator. I'm trying these days to find something that works for all parties, but I'm confident that whatever the idea is, we can make it work. It may not be in the same format. We may have to find free money. It may be in a later phase, right? Because we might have to make some money first, right? But we're going to be transparent about all that. And that's what's important. It's when people aren't transparent that we lose trust. And when we lose trust, we're not working together. So I think, to answer your question directly, it will not be easy, but I'm confident that with transparency around financial feasibility of ideas, we can come to an arrangement that makes sense for all. Or people might look at it and say, you know what? You're right. It's not financially feasible. Let's switch and look at something else, right?
I mean, you've been able to get NAMDAR to the table. I mean, this is not his business model. I mean, he buys dead malls cheap. He collects rent from the few that may be left, sells it off in pieces and makes a bundle. I mean, that's the business model somehow. From what I've read, he doesn't do partnerships in general, development partnerships. So you've gotten him to the table. Has he given you, you know, a benchmark? You know, we need this much revenue coming from, you know, whatever it is. Do you have some type of?
Yeah, yeah, no, we have a firm agreement as to my benchmarks and my goals. And those goals were negotiated, obviously, right? They wanted to be up here. I wanted to be down here to be safe. And we found something in the middle that we think is feasible, right? I built in kind of tiers below that, that I'm still in the game, right? So we have some wiggle room. We have some place to play. But, you know, we have a lot of work to do, right? And I'm confident that if we all work together, the extra value that we may or may not need to create will come from that collaboration and the excitement around the project, right? People don't understand how important, well, a lot of people do, but some people don't understand, especially in the real estate, how important it is to have an understanding of where you're going to get without risk, right? So when investors come in, they have that predictability, right? It changes the world, right? When they don't have that predictability, right? And they feel like they have to come in and battle for five years to get their one little project approved, that's where people don't want to invest. That's where their IRRs and their multiple hurdles increase because they have to take on more risk, right? If they come in and they say, oh, wow, this place has got its act together. I can get my site plan approved in 90 days. I know the community is already behind my use, right? That changes people's return parameters. Now, I've underwritten this deal under the normal return parameters. So that bonus comes when we create the predictability and that ease to market, right? So we've got some buffers in here. We don't have a ton of buffers, but, you know, and we're going to have to bob and weave, right? We might get nine months down the road and decide, well, we got to go back to them and have a conversation about some changes to, you know, the expectations, right? I don't know, right? But we did our best. We've got them at the table, like you said. And we're going to keep moving the ball forward.
Yes, please.
Just quickly, I would encourage all of you to write down the email for Ryan because he is accessible. I got to speak to him on a one-to-one. And I did want to ask you, it looked at the beginning like there'll be an interactive portion of our website where people could submit suggestions or questions.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of timeline for that?
I'm working on that. The community, this is, so I go into different communities and different communities have a lot of kind of activism, you know? Some have a lot, some have a little, right? This community happens to have a lot of activism around this site already. So I'm trying to, especially because of my time frame, not reinvent the wheel, right? So I'm working with some of the active folks in the community already and I'd like to add to that group, right? On some of the efforts they've already put in place. And we're going to try to combine those efforts. So one of the things that may come is kind of how do we meld our process with their already-in-place process? So I'm not there just yet, Councilwoman Larson, but we will get there. And we did actually have a meeting on that very topic today. So I'm hoping quickly is the answer.
Councilman Posh?
You know, in this job, sometimes you don't see a lot of bright spots, but there's an incredible bright spot when it comes to our planning department and Director Zamp. And we've had, you know, I've had minimal interactions with him until recently as an appointed member. But his relationship with you, what he's done in the past, what we see today, you know, it takes a lot of years for planning to come out of the ground. Van Aken, I think it was 18 years of work that a family member of mine spent on that project. It takes a lot of time. You don't see these kinds of results overnight. But this is a city that has not really thought about planning and they're thinking about planning. And we should be proud of it and proud of this department. And I'm really happy that you're here. You're the right guy for the job. So looking forward to see what you're going to bring to us.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Porter. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, city administrators report.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, mayor. My report won't be nearly as inspiring. In fact, it's really in the nature of an announcement. And following up on Mr. Porter's theme of transparency, I recently shared with the mayor my intention to retire at the end of this year. And I wanted to share with you and the public why and why now. I have shared with some, including Council President, the incredible impact that my father has had on the person I am today from the standpoint of understanding what integrity means, honor, respect for oneself and others. Those lessons, the way he carried himself firmly implanted those lessons into me. Unfortunately, I lost my father at a very early age. He died at 61 while I was still in college. And I miss him terribly. But I mention that in part because at the end of this year, I will have outlived my father by a decade. And I think often about this last year that I've been in this position. And unfortunately, I have experienced a disproportionate number of friends, family, colleagues, loved ones who succumbed to disease, disability, and death. And I'd be less than candid if I didn't indicate the profound impact that's had on me and my thinking about what I want to do with my last quarter, God willing, and where I want to spend that. When I took this position, I had to give up some things that meant a great deal to me. I was teaching a course at Case Western Reserve on Ethics and Professionalism, a subject matter that we are in dire need of in every place in our community at this point. And I missed that. I was also substitute teaching in the Heights system. In large part, I obviously wasn't doing it to make a lot of money, but the system gave my kids a great launch to their academic career. And I figured maybe there's something I can give back. I miss these things. There are other pursuits that I just can't engage in in a position this is demanding as this. And so it's very difficult, but for those personal reasons, that's part of the motivation. The other is professional. I mentioned at my mid-year report that the mayor is firmly engaged in an effort to improve the delivery of our services. And he's looking to do that through a process improvement management approach. You know, Lean Six Sigma type approach. If you're not familiar with Lean Six Sigma, it's a management philosophy that started in the manufacturing area, but has migrated to other sectors, including municipal governance. And in fact, a number of us have gone through a boot camp to kind of get us some early grounding in this. The reality is, that's not my strong suit. That's not what I do. To the extent I bring value, I'm a teacher. I'm a coach. I'm a facilitator. My goal ideally is to help build camaraderie among the team, to help build goodwill, you know, to build those kind of qualities. And they're not mutually exclusive, the approaches, but they're not automatically compatible. You know, when I think about the kinds of things that Lean Six Sigma looks to do, which is to, you know, get rid of waste, to find efficient ways to get things done. Those are important approaches. My approach is to build camaraderie, to build goodwill, not to learn how to build a better mousetrap. Sometimes you have to be honest with yourself about what you bring to the party and what you don't. And I've said to the mayor candidly that I just didn't feel that I was adding sufficient the value that I was capable of in this management scheme. The mayor has the absolute right to build the kind of team that complements his vision. You know, there's no daylight between me and the mayor and our desire to make sure this community thrives and does well. And if I can borrow a phrase, there's more than one way to groom a cat for all the cat lovers out there. And, you know, sometimes, there's an old saying about Miles Davis and his wardrobe, that his style is in the future. You know, my approach may be in the future. It's not now. And so, you know, you have to make some decisions about where you think you can add value. And I think that I can be of greater value to my community, you know, to my family, to my church, to my school system, doing something different. So, you know, I'll be at this through the end of the year. But I think at that time, I'm going to move on and do something else. So I wanted to share that with you. I want to share it with the public and to give the mayor ample time to find a suitable replacement. That's all I have.
Anybody want to comment? I don't want to. Okay. Well, I think that's one of the most eloquent speeches I've heard. And I think that that's one of the really gracious things to give the mayor that kind of time to replace. Departmental reports, I believe Director Zamp. The much-heralded, recently-heralded.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me just a minute or two. I'm happy to announce something very exciting, I think, for our community, which is the launching of a design competition for accessory dwelling units within the city. So just briefly, an accessory dwelling unit is another unit on a property. We've been looking and working with the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission on the value of accessory dwelling units, not only within Cleveland Heights, but nationally, actually. And we're one of just a handful of recipients of an AARP grant this year to do a design competition for this very purpose. There were a couple last year. So it's an emerging trend and something where we can really engage our community. Today's the kickoff. We're going to post everything on our website tomorrow and throw it in the city news on Friday. But just in short, there's going to be two categories. One category is for designers, architects, et cetera, to come up with designs and award a firm or an individual, up to three winners. And then there's going to be what we're calling a People's Choice Award, which is to open it up to anybody and everybody in the community. It could be a toddler on the back of a napkin, but we wanted to give creativity a chance in this community because we know people are so creative. And then that People's Choice Award will be handed over to a licensed architect to bring to a design that is able to be pre-approved. The idea here is if this is something that we eventually do adopt in our zoning code, to have pre-approved plans available to the public free of charge so that people wouldn't have to engage with an architect and spend all that money. Because one of the key goals of this, not only is the ability to age in place and sustainability, but also affordability. So be on the lookout, everyone, for this. And please, it's really the type of thing to tell your neighbors and your friends because we want to have all people be able to participate. There will be an award ceremony that we've targeted December 4th for. And the deadline for the submission is going to be October the 21st. There'll be a question-and-answer session that we'll be having in person and then online on September 17th, sorry. And again, that'll all be on the website and in our city news on Friday. So thank you all and good to see you.
Thank you. All right, report of the clerk of council. That would be Addy.
Just to notify council that an application has been received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new C2 liquor permit for Lavell Gift Company LLC located at 12427 Cedar Road. This matter's been referred to the chief of police and the mayor.
Very good. Now we're on to public comment. First, we'll do comments on agenda items. You'll have three minutes. When you come up to the mic, please say your name and the street you live in. street you live on.
I have none for legislative items.
Oh, my. Okay. Then let's go to public comment.
Resident Kuta?
Yes.
Do you mind if I spend a minute making a public comment?
Oh, no, I don't mind.
Would do it there, but I'm pretty lightheaded because I need to get some water, which I'm going to do in a minute. But this is about the pool. Many of you know, I was on the school board for eight years. I'm going to ask the question, why not work together? The school provides the pool at no cost. The city operates it like it does every other pools. You know, there's a long history of the city and the school district working together in just that fashion. That's the model Shaker uses. So instead of looking at this from why can't we do it, why don't we look at it this from the perspective, let's work together? And I am, I mean, the real reasons about Ohio revised code has already been discussed. But in brief, it's not what's written in Ohio revised code. It's about how the auditor interprets those rules. And the auditor in Cleveland Heights School District interpreted some findings that was detrimental to our school district, basically saying that the school district went out of its fiduciary duty to spend money on something that it wasn't its core value to do, which is educate kids. And the reason why the school district is pushing back is because it doesn't want to find itself in a position where it's going to get that same finding from the auditor. It's reached out to the auditor to ask to get a clarification on this. But the auditor isn't necessarily the most friendliest organization when it comes to this school district. So just saying, if we want the school, I mean, I think everybody in this room, city administration, the council, want to see swimming at the high school. The only way swimming in the high school is going to happen, mayor, is if you make the choice to do it. You're the mayor. You're duly elected. I respect that. But it's up to you. And if you don't want to do, you don't want to do it. It's real simple. But other mayors have done it, and it's very possible that it could happen. So that's all I'm going to say.
All right. So Addy, how many comments do we have here? I mean, I'm sorry, how many people do we have?
About 17.
About 17. So you have three minutes, but if you can, you know, just make it a little more economical, just for the late hour. Go ahead, Addy.
Lee Chilcote.
Good evening. I'm Lee Chilcote. I live at 2322 Delamere Drive. Tonight, I speak to the transfer of the former Coventry School Building by the library to Coventry Peace. Margaret Mead once said, never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. That is what we said in 2017, when we advocated for Coventry to become home of the arts. Well, guess what? We're still here. Ray Gonzalez, Brady Dindia, Kristuk Hawthorne, Lee Chilcote, Jen Winters, Paul Volby, and many, many others. We're here because we deeply committed, deeply believe that the opportunity that is before us for the arts community and are committed to its realization. Look around you. What community has a concentration of arts organizations like we have here in the Coventry Peace Building? We have a fantastic opportunity to create the strongest arts district in Northeast Ohio, and we are more than halfway there. Let us have the building, fill it up, and we'll be there. What has peace done to achieve or to seize this opportunity? Well, all that we can do without the support of the City of Cleveland Heights and the library. We have been, we have a team in place to acquire and be an outstanding owner of the building. We know how to operate and lease out the building, moving quickly from 50% to 100% with supportive arts tenants. We know how to change out the systems in the building and make replacements and attract energy and efficiency credits for the building. How we will do this? What we ask is that the former Coventry Building be directly conveyed to Coventry Peace, together with easements that will support it in the area of utilities and access and so forth, but reserving to the library all of the land. We want to work cooperatively with the land. We've developed a workable approach, and it will work here. The building was well-occupied between 18 and 20 and worked and was profitable. The occupants collaborated closely and created cost-effective operations. We can do that again. Capital improvements, we have hired a consultant, Matthew Kasek, who lives on Norfolk Road. And we have a good working relationship with two contractors and can achieve the capital costs. And finally, our group is well versed in attending grants and philanthropic support. So we know we can do this. Well, what's the bottom line? The bottom line is that the Peace Building, as envisioned by Peace, will complement the library's concept and vision for the playground, the neighborhood's vision for Coventry Village, and the community village, the community's vision for the home of the arts.
Mr. Chilcote, your time is up.
Just one more sentence.
One more sentence.
Please, please, council, seize this opportunity, break down the barriers between the library, and make this happen for the community. Thank you.
Blanche Filanci.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Blanche Filanci. I live on Yorkshire Road. And I'm here tonight as a member of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland, Cleveland Heights University Heights Chapter, doing what I often do, which is letting you and the community know about a wonderful educational opportunity the league would like to offer. On Thursday, September 12th, the Cleveland Heights University Heights Chapter's League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland, in partnership with the Heights Libraries, will present a voter education forum on election disinformation and artificial intelligence. The title of the forum is Disinformation, AI, and Elections: How to Separate Fact from Fiction in 2024. The forum will, of course, be free and open to the public. It will take place September 12th from 7:00 to 8:15 at the Cleveland Heights Community Center, 1 Monticello Boulevard. Plenty of free parking, and we do thank the city, as always, for the use of that facility. Are you worried that deep fakes, artificial intelligence, and disinformation may be influencing voter decisions? Are you concerned about election integrity and wonder if there may be an element of truth in the claims of election fraud? How are you feeling about the state of democracy here in the U.S. and globally? Our presenters will be Dean Jackson, a researcher specializing in democracy, media, and technology, and Lee Jordan, a respected news anchor and award-winning journalist. They will lead a conversation on these and other topics with questions from the audience, as we always do. So they will lead a conversation on these and other topics to get all of you informed and prepared to vote in November. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Matt Moore.
Say it again.
Matt Moore.
There he is. Stanley Ramoni.
Check 12. Good evening. Time started. Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Moore. I'm the newly minted executive director of Coventry Village Special Improvement District. And I just wanted to echo a little bit of Mr. Chilcote's call to look for ways to collaborate or move forward from potential plans to just raise the building, the former elementary building, and perhaps plant trees. Coventry Village, as you may or may not know, is a commercial district by and large that has a lot of vacancies at current. So every bit of those 100 people that work there throughout the week, the artists that work there, the nonprofit leaders that are serving teenagers and artists of various sorts, that are serving adults with disabilities, when they bring them to our district, we love to be the restaurants that they go to eat to at, to be the coffee shops where they hang out, and to collaborate with them on community events. So in the gap of any other opportunities that the library would like to do, or any sort of compelling vision that they would like to bring forth, I would very much love the Peace Campus to continue being a place for nonprofits in the arts. And the Special Improvement District is happy to increase our footprint and serve that building, serve that property in any way that the library, the city, or the council would like us to explore. And Ms. Deidre McPherson, who offered her services a couple months ago at a similar meeting, would love for the library or for the city to bring her into the mix as well. I think we've got a lot of ways to reinvigorate this building and not see just a few more trees planted. I love trees. I think the business district wants something different. Thank you.
Mark Chup.
Hello. My name is Mark Chup at 2924 Edge Hill Road, just around the corner from the Coventry Peace Campus. I've been, you're going to hear some themes tonight that we also heard from the Severance Group and from the pool conversation. I've been concerned about the lack of progress on reaching a solution to the future of the Coventry Campus and the tenants who occupy it. I consider myself a visionary pragmatist. And from that perspective, this is not an insurmountable challenge. There's been a lot of debate about each party's responsibilities and limitations, which has eroded trust among friends and led to narrowing of options. I propose that we begin from a different premise. Rather than focus on if the building can be saved, or if the entities in the space are financially viable, I propose we begin from the premise that a center for the arts and civic engagement united in one physical place is an asset we do not want to lose in our community. We need to begin with the acknowledgement that the city, the library, the school district, the business district, many nonprofits and for-profit businesses all share the same overall mission, to serve the community of Cleveland Heights. With this shared goal of serving our community, we should all be starting from this premise. We have a vibrant arts center that needs to be preserved and strengthened. So rather than focusing on what each party can't do, let's open the conversation with exploring what asset each party brings to make sure this center is preserved. Creative solutions will, on all the parties, assume that we all have a center in our community. As home to the arts, this kind of center reflects who Cleveland Heights is at its best. Why would we squander this over some short-term physical and financial constraints? Many growing and creative communities across the country are trying to create something that we already have. So starting from this premise, and by exploring our assets, will naturally lead to a second discussion of what are the constraints and limitations we must overcome. That's different than looking at constraints as a justification to let something this vital wither and die. If the current owner of the building faces too many constraints, how can others join together to provide support for what is needed? This might lead to shared ownership, transfer of ownership, or other not yet conceived of solutions. Each party could then shift to explore the opportunities that open up themselves by committing to save the center. Might be a little bit like stone soup. I'm reminded of the Geneva Lake Conference and Hotel in Ashton Bula County. When the community envisioned that building, the state of Ohio and many developers said it wasn't possible. They persevered, and they came up with a T-shirt that said, in Ashton Bula County, we don't take no for an answer. They preserved and created public-private partnership that led to a creative solution, including state financing, that is a resource for across the country. Cleveland Heights is faced with similar challenges and has this opportunity to do great things. Let's roll up our sleeves and figure out how to preserve and grow our home for the arts. Thank you.
Justin Alcorn.
I'll be quick, I promise. Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. Justin Alcorn from Delaware Drive. After I spoke at an earlier meeting, the mayor and I spoke about 30 minutes. He told me that he was waiting for answers to questions that he'd asked the school board. And until he had that information, he couldn't in all conscience make a decision to go ahead and have the Cleveland Heights Recreation Department provide resources to open the Heights High Pool to citizens for swimming. He told me that the school board had a legal opinion about the legality of them running the program and that they would not share. He asked me why they hadn't talked to the auditor. He asked me why they felt that they couldn't just open the pool themselves, as Beechwood did. And he stated to me that the school board had more money than the city, so why couldn't they just use that money? I talked to school board member Dan Hines for about an hour and asked him these questions. And here's what he told me. The school board did talk to the auditor and asked the question, could they run a program like this without getting into trouble? The auditor refused to answer, saying he wouldn't discuss a hypothetical. The school board has already been audited and had a finding against them, as Mr. Posh said. That finding resulted in fines personally against the superintendent and the treasurer on the order of tens of thousands of dollars. I'm sure if anyone here had been found personally responsible for paying tens of thousands of dollars, then that same entity had refused to say whether they would fine you again for a specific action. You would get the same message that I heard. Basically, I dare you, so I can fine you again. I didn't need to ask Dan about the statement of the amount of money in the schools versus the city, because the answer to that is obvious. The amount of money the schools have in their budget versus the amount of money the city has is irrelevant. The point is that the city has money set aside for resources and employees, which exists to provide recreational opportunities to their citizens. The school has money to pay for education of the students, and it has already been demonstrated that using the money for any other purpose will result in the punishment from the state of Ohio. The city has employees, lifeguards, who are Heights High students. They have just had the available hours for work severely reduced as Cumberland closes. I'm sure they would appreciate the hours and morning and evening open swim would provide in the building that they are already attending. In short, the mayor's excuses for why he won't allow the Recreation Department to use the Heights Pool for swimming just don't add up. Thank you.
Judith Ryder.
Good evening. I'm Judith Ryder. I live on Lincoln Boulevard. I'm a longtime Cleveland Heights resident. We are incredibly lucky to live and work, many of us, in Cleveland Heights, with the welcoming, state-of-the-art, nearly 100-year-old Heights Libraries and its four locations across our neighborhoods on the Coventry, Noble, and Cedar Roads. You all know that. Offering its spaces, books, and much more, alongside creative learning programs from tech to tie-dye, poetry to ukulele, for youth and older adults and of all backgrounds and abilities. I have loved the library's Excel classes when I was floundering and not understanding how to use Excel formulas. They are wonderful classes. We are also extremely lucky to live in a community with vibrant arts and creative organizational opportunities as well, with high-quality visual art and design, creative writing, music, and music-making. I just did a concert in the Alma Theater. It was incredible to have the audience come when it was 90 degrees hot, and they showed up for us. Dance, movement, and of course, theater. Through membership in my 25-year-old Northeast Ohio organization, which is called Cleveland Arts Education Consortium, we know them all very well and regularly celebrate their ever-evolving programming and spirited work. We in Cleveland Heights can support and make all of that happen. We are enormously blessed with resilient, creative talent. And there's keen interest in all, as you hear in all of these meetings, in making the Heights the vibrant community that it has been and continues to grow and be ever more vibrant. There are makers here, and there are doers here, and we all are some of both. So I hope with these thoughtful sessions that we, all together, including you, Mayor Sarin, and the city council members, can move forward on a cooperative path to help our wonderful library pass the oversight and management torch to, or through, or with the city, to the capable and experienced Coventry Peace Campus leaders. The center itself is a gathering place for many people in the Heights and still many, many more from farther away. The center, with easy access, offers ever-growing economic opportunities for the city. Cleveland Heights continues to be a bright light for living, thriving, and sharing. It's what brought me and my family here. Let's keep its long-heralded arts and learning flame alive. Thank you. Mayor Sarin, thank you for your remarks about the Thomas murder and for your care about the family and the neighbors who are very much appreciative of your support. Thank you.
Janet Kramer.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janet Kramer, and I am a longtime Cleveland Heights resident. I've been here 36 years, 30 of which I've been living at 3606 I've been here 36 years, 30 of which I've been living at 3606 Cummings Road. So as you already know, and will see more of tonight, the swimmers in Cleveland Heights are passionate and serious. I also want to add that even though, as a Medicare recipient, I can swim at pools in other cities for free, I would pay to swim locally in our beautiful Cleveland Heights High School Pool. We supported the building of the high school in good faith, that it would be open to the public, as it was pre-COVID. It is a valuable asset to this community, emphasis on the word "community." Since funds have been allocated to pay for lifeguards, it's now past time for you all to get your act together, along with the school board, to allow public access to the high school pool again. Thank you.
Carrie Seidman. Carrie.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Seidman. I live at 2968 Corydon. Back to the pool. I've been swimming at Cumberland Pool, I think, since 1955, so it goes back a ways. I'd like to say first, it's been an excellent summer at Cumberland, both for laps, including lap swimmers, the Tiger Shark Swim Team, diving team, synchronized swimming, and just recreational swimming. Things were smooth and ran beautifully. It's been brought up already that other cities, Mayfield, I believe, is one, as you mentioned, Beechwood, Mayor Sarin, they use the high school pool. And I'm told that here in Cleveland Heights, the originally Department of Community Services and then Parks and Recreation were administering the program at the Heights Pool, but no more, apparently. What strikes me at Heights is in the morning hours at Heights, as opposed to when I went there many, many years ago, the pool's not used. It's empty all morning. They don't use it for phys ed, which I think is wrong, but that's another matter. So the pool's empty. That along with the fact that we have, as someone mentioned, passionate swimmers, and as you can see by looking around, an aging population. I don't mean, you know. Swimming is, I used to do lots of, yeah, I used to do lots of different activities, tennis and softball and all this other stuff. Swimming's about it for me now, and I do a lot of it. And I would love to use the high school pool. It's a great pool. So this brochure that I got the other day has nothing about swimming, of course, after Labor Day. Everything else goes on, from ice skating to every manner of activity, which is great. So I urge you all to solve the lifeguard problem, if that's a problem, the insurance issue, if that's a problem, and let's open the high school pool. And I hope you'll be transparent, as Mr. Porter used the term earlier, and share any plans you have and get moving on them. Thank you very much.
Nancy Ballou.
Hello, I'm Nancy Ballou. I live on Cummings Road. My beloved Cumberland Pool has closed for the season. Thank goodness we have that beautiful new pool at Heights High, where the water is sparkling clean and alarmingly cold all winter long.
There's no more swimming at the Heights Pool, Nancy.
What? It can't be. I've been swimming there in winter for years. Let me see here. Okay. Let's see. There's yoga, zumba, jazzercise. There's basketball, martial arts. We got pickleball. No swimming. No aerobics, no laps, no family swim. How can this be?
The city is not scheduling any more swimming at the Heights School.
Why not? It can't be about money. We already paid a fee to swim. I mean, we've always paid a fee to swim. And the city council allocated $25,000 towards a lifeguard. I was there when they did it. Council members, Kudo, Larson, and Petrus, they all supported it. I think someone else did, too. And the Parks and Recreations Committee agreed. We were all so happy.
But the mayor does not agree.
The mayor? What does the mayor have against swimming? It's one of the healthiest and safest physical activities there is. It brings people together of all ages and abilities. It's, it's like us.
We know.
So you're telling me that we passed a bond issue, we built a new high school with a fabulous pool, we survived a global pandemic, elected a mayor, and now we can't even swim in our pool?
That's right, Nancy.
Well, the only thing that's changed is that we elected a mayor.
That's right.
Well, what can we as a community do?
Elect a new mayor.
Oh my God, what are we doing? Oh, no.
Come together.
There will be an answer. Let us swim. Let us swim. Let us swim. Please, your mayor and council, let us swim. Let us swim.
Hey, I just want to tell you, you guys are out of order.
Drew Herzig.
Never follow children, animals, or swimmers, I guess, is the motto here. That's a tough one, and I'm not going to disrobe, don't worry. Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. I'm here tonight, Councilor Mr. Mayor, I'm here tonight to ask the city to get a head start on drafting legislation recognizing October 10th as National, sorry, October 11th as National Coming Out Day and November 20th as Transgender Day of Remembrance. A lot of people don't realize that in the LGBTQ community, we do not have comprehensive federal protections, and the Supreme Court is doing its best to strip us of the few protections we have. In the private sector, we can still be fired for coming out at work. When people are fired, they often lose their health care. When people lose their job and their health care, they often lose their housing. In the community of the homeless, homeless, where the LGBTQ people are disproportionately represented, particularly the LGBTQ youth who have been thrown out by their families, they are on the streets, and unfortunately, a lot of shelters have a religious bias that will not permit LGBTQ out people to be there. So we are extremely vulnerable, and then, of course, there is murder. So our LGBTQ community, we are exposed to losing our jobs, losing our health care, losing our housing, and losing our lives. And that is still happening here, in particular in the transgender community. The transgender community is the most exposed to all those perils. Transgender Day of Remembrance is to remember the people who have lost their lives to transphobia over the course of the year. That hits the whole trans community, but particularly trans women and trans women of color. And what's really sad about, I mean, in addition to all of that, transphobia affects everybody. We saw recently at the Olympics where cis athletes were falsely accused of being trans, a combination of transphobia and misogyny that was directed against athletes of color in particular. So transphobia hurts everyone. Asking the city to recognize National Coming Out Day on October 11th and Transgender Day of Remembrance on November 20th is simply asking the council and the administration to say that we're all are welcome, all are protected, that Cleveland Heights needs to be a safe space for everyone, because the Supreme Court, as I said, is stripping us of our rights, and Ohio is doing its best to be one of the worst states for the LGBTQ community. Whether it is reproductive health care or gender-supportive health care in general, we are losing it, and people are leaving the state, those who can afford to, some of us cannot afford to. We are trapped here, so please, do everything you can to make Cleveland Heights as safe a place as possible for the LGBTQ community, because everyone benefits from that. Thank you very much.
Ray Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Ray Gonzalez. I live at 3014 Berkshire Road in the Coventry neighborhood. Our family moved here 29 years ago because of the Peace Park and the Coventry Elementary School, where my two sons went to school. I had a small work of a part in the building of the park 31 years ago, and had been a member of the Coventry Peace Group that maintained the playground for more than 25 years, until the library told us we could not work on it due to liability issues. I've endorsed the effort to rebuild the Peace Playground and made a significant, for us, donation to help fund the rebuild. When the library wanted to have a formal agreement with the nonprofits and school building, I helped in the handoff of our funds to the new group to develop the Coventry School Building into a community education and art center. I had and have a confidence in the new Coventry Peace Inc. will carry on the core community vision of professionalism and integrity. Coventry Peace has always been a grassroots effort that accomplished much through key public-private partnerships, the dedication of parents, residents, and nonprofits. It wants to continue to grow and help others. As a master-level social worker and mental health professional for 45-plus years, I have learned through training and personal experience how important a community center is for the cohesion of a neighborhood, especially its mental health needs. A community center like Coventry Peace is also critical for the economic health of Coventry Business District, is one of the largest employers in the Mystic District, and brings in thousands of people annually to Coventry. Cleveland Heights calls itself home to the arts. In the building, there's over 107 staff that are employed there, has over 138 individuals serving on the boards, 2,940 volunteers, and has recorded over 20,934 direct participants, a total of well over 24,000 people. One only has to look at the impact that the arts have had to Gordon Square in Detroit Shorewood area to see that arts and education can be a major economic force in the community. The nonprofits that make up Coventry Peace invested tens of thousands of hours and significant financial resources to develop and grow a unique organization that benefit a wide range of citizens of Cleveland Heights, especially the residents of North Coventry. While the playground is great for playing fun, the nonprofits help grow the arts and education of both children and adults that they cannot really reach otherwise. I'm asking the city of Cleveland Heights to step up and show that it cares for all its citizens, its neighborhoods, and for the leadership that the nonprofits of Coventry Peace have provided by finding a way to maintain our beloved arts and education community. Of all the problems the city is facing, our community center doesn't have to be a problem. It can be a wonderful opportunity for growth and renewal. I think that we all want to prevent losing these organizations because of what the loss will mean to the community members. How important a thriving center like ours would be to the overall well-being of Coventry and all of Cleveland Heights. Let's truly be a home for the arts. Thank you for your time.
Fern Hart.
Say it again?
Fern Hart.
Hello, everyone. My name is Fern Hart. I speak to you as a resident of Cleveland Heights and also an artist at Artful and the Coventry Peace Campus. I'm also one of the recently appointed members to Cleveland Heights Transportation and Mobility Committee. Cleveland Heights, as a self-described home to the arts, has an opportunity with the Coventry Peace Building to support something that many cities around the country can only dream of having. An already ADA-accessible building of this size that is already so well-suited to housing organizations and individuals in a collaborative setting is not realistic for many towns and cities to create from the ground up. The passionate founders of Coventry Peace, the individual groups, and their many community supporters have created this space, and you, the leaders of the city of Cleveland Heights, can now help steward this project to further success. The Cleveland Heights community has also not been silent about the idea of losing Coventry Peace nonprofits, and they have definitely been clear in both the library's own online survey and their community listening session that what they want is long-term support for these nonprofits staying in the Coventry Peace Building. If the library has decided that they are unwilling to be landlords of this building in the future, then I believe that they have an obligation to the taxpayers that they serve to find a way to hand over the building to the city of Cleveland Heights and do what the taxpayers have communicated to them that they want. The city of Cleveland Heights website says creativity and culture abound in Cleveland Heights, and the many groups housed in the Coventry Peace Building are a large reason that that statement is true. The diverse community built with Artful and the other nonprofits' tenants, like Lake Erie Inc., Future Heights, and The Singers Club are fostering creativity and innovation in our community. These organizations are also attracting other groups to the building, the building's new tenants, like Dance Cleveland and Do Good Day Hub. These new tenants sought out spaces in the Peace Building specifically to collaborate with a strong group of creative nonprofits that have already been residing there long-term. All of these tenants are progressive groups focused on uplifting marginalized voices, connecting people to their larger communities, and promoting economic growth in Cleveland Heights. As an artist in Artful, I can say personally that this space and community has been the most transformative part of my artistic career so far. Having this accessible and affordable studio space has been integral to me being able to achieve my career goals moving forward. So few spaces in the area are accessible to disabled individuals, and it's very necessary that this space remains. I'm not the only person who's going to be affected by these concerns. The CDC states that over 28% of the U.S. population is disabled in some way. Of the thousands of citizens who have visited the Coventry Peace Building or benefited from their programming, it can definitely be assumed at least 28% of them have either a visible or invisible disability. We, your disabled citizens, are relying on you, the leaders of the city of Cleveland Heights, to support the Coventry Peace Building and contribute to the future access and success of this arts, culture, and education center. Thank you.
Brady Dendia.
Good evening, all. My name is Brady Dendia. I'm a resident of University Heights, but I have been a long-term guest at Coventry since my punk rock days as a teenager on up to my volunteer days now with Artful and Coventry Peace. I have a bunch of remarks prepared that I was going to read. Some of, some of you heard some of them earlier. I tweaked them, so I wouldn't bore you. I didn't have the chance to read them to you, mayor, so I wanted to read them, but I'm going to scratch that. I'd like to email you the comments that I have prepared. If you would mind taking a few minutes to read them, I'd appreciate it. I'm scrapping it because what you saw tonight with this group here is the epitome of what we are fighting for at Coventry Peace: an engaged, informed, creative community. That was the most awesome engagement of creativity I've seen maybe ever. I mean, to, to come together, and I know it's difficult to try and speak at the same time and keep the timing right. That was impressive, because it is an example of how arts and creativity affect more than just if we make a painting or we play an instrument. It affects how we engage with our leadership as well. And having a robust, we've, I've mentioned before, all the benefits that having a robust arts and culture scene brings extra benefits, like the crime prevention and better educational outcomes. But really, it just builds a better community all the way around, from your feet to the tops of your heads. A creative community finds a way to bring humor and joy to very serious problems, finds a way to get people on opposing sides to help listen and hear their voices. So I'm going to leave it at that. Coventry Peace is an important part of this really special, incredibly unique, wonderfully engaged community. I may not be a Cleveland Heights resident, but I am super proud to be part of organizations that I hope in some way uplift each and every one of you, and thank you.
Jennifer Wintner.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Wintner. I'm Scarborough Road, and I express my creativity through my work with real estate and numbers, so I'm just going to read some brief remarks about the financial aspects of the Coventry Peace Campus. And it's because of the financial considerations, we can show that conveying the building to Coventry Peace will work. We can provide assurance that the organization will generate sufficient rent revenue to cover all annual operating expenses, and it will be able to raise the funds to cover needed physical improvements to the building. The building is currently only half-occupied, yet it operates in the black, especially after the tenants regain responsibility for managing the building and no longer have to pay for an expensive management company. They will be able to show significant cash flow. Additionally, the tenants will be able to market the building, and they anticipate filling most, if not all, the vacancies once uncertainty about the future is removed. The increased revenue will enable the tenants to establish a reserve account and, if necessary, take on debt. Coventry Peace has and are obtaining additional engineering studies and quotes for upgrading and/or replacing building components. The current estimate for making the necessary capital improvements to the building is about one-point-two-five million dollars, which is less than half the amount the library claims the improvements will cost. We should have a refined estimate of this cost within the next few weeks. The state has grant funds for projects that will improve the energy efficiency of the existing structures, and its next round of funding will open in early October. This program has funded at least one project similar to Coventry Peace. Other funders, both governmental and foundations, have expressed interest in funding building improvements to us. However, we can't pursue any of these funding applications until we have site control. We need at least a written agreement with the library board that it will convey title to the building to Coventry Peace before we're eligible to apply for any funding. The library's staff and board have stated they value the tenants. They also have stated they don't want to be a landlord or put any more time or money into the building. We're offering a win-win solution. We're appealing to you, city council and administration, to speak with Nancy Levin and the members of the library board on a one-on-one basis and/or at the board meeting next week to help them understand the importance and the benefits of their conveying the building to Coventry Peace. Thank you.
Melody Joy Hart. I'm gonna really edit mine down. Melody Hart, twenty-nine-seventy-six Monmouth, because of the time, and everyone has said so much about this all writing that I agree with. So we are the home of the arts, or at least we have been over time. So all the things that I've said, I agree with. There is an opportunity at this point, though, for council to show leadership and to do several things. One, attend to the September ninth library meeting and speak in favor of the solution. Two, to pass a resolution in favor of the solution, letting your constituents know you've heard their concerns. Three, reach out to the library board, sit down with them, and work out a solution together. Four, if need be, perhaps the city can, given this is such an important piece of our community, maybe the city should assist financially in some ways as well. So I encourage you to do that, and I encourage anyone listening to this meeting who wants to see that building be a home to the arts organizations to attend the library board meeting on the evening of September ninth at Lee Road Library to give public comment. Thank you.
And last but not least, Joanne Segal, please.
To Mayor Seren and council, please do whatever it takes to open the high school pool to the public when the high school is not using it. There must be a way. There are enough other suburbs that have opened their school pools to the public. They all found a way to do this. Having access to an indoor and an outdoor pool is something that prospective homeowners do look at when deciding where to move their families and the current homeowners consider regarding staying here. We need to offer adult lap swimming and swim lessons for people of all ages. Personally, I'm a competitive swimmer and triathlete, so I'm privileged to get to swim in Shaker with the Masters team, but I've also always bought a pass from Cumberland Pool since nineteen ninety-five. That's where I took my son, and that's where I taught him how to swim. I always have wanted to support our local pool, even though I have the opportunity to swim in other pools also. Thank you.
Well, before we dive into legislation... Oh, you guys got it. That was great. You know, there's been a lot of research on people's fears, and one of the biggest fears people, I think the biggest fear people have is public speaking. It's always been rated above death, but I have to say, people are fearless and entertaining.
Thank you, President Cuda. I just want to thank all of you for coming tonight. I didn't expect this, but I created the legislation to put the twenty-five thousand dollars for the lifeguards for the pool. And I created, all of the legislation I create, I call it the people's legislation because it comes from you, the people, what you want to see within the city. So I am for trying to get funding, making sure the funding is there, and making sure we have lifeguards is there. I was the chair of the Parks and Recs Committee when, before the pandemic, and we were actually functioning, just like you're saying. We had swimming at the pools, and we were taking care of it and paying for it out of the city's coffers. So I wanted to continue. I want you to be able to swim. So thank you very much for supporting the legislation I created, and I want to thank my council members also for supporting the legislation that I put forward. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we'll do our first readings for adoption.
All right, I have Resolution Number one sixty-one dash twenty-two-four.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes, please.
I've got a question, just a clarifying question about our public comments. Have we moved up council comments to, after the public comments portion? Because this happened several times tonight, and when I've attempted to address anything in the past, I've been told that I couldn't. So we need to come up with some parameters or some guides exactly when we can and cannot speak, because it's happened twice tonight, and when I've attempted to address anything in public comment, I've been cut off in the middle of it. And so this is something that we're going to keep up. I either expect our comments to be moved up, or I expect to have some type of parameters around when we can and cannot respond to public comment. Because tonight I was flabbergasted that two members of, or two of my colleagues were allowed to do something without interruption, when I have never in two and a half, two years and eight months been able to do that without being cut off. So if we're going to comment on public comments, then it needs to be on the agenda. If not, we need to wait until it's council comments time, or we need to treat all of our colleagues the same.
Yeah, I mean, I can remember indulging you and others, you know.
Okay, but I can tell you from my perspective, I have never been able to speak without being cut off after addressing anything. So my expectation again is, are we allowed to comment separately from council comments after public comment? If that's the case, then let's add it to the agenda. If not, I would like that clarified now moving forward. So if it does happen again, at least there's a level of accountability for me, because I feel like it keeps shifting and moving depending on who wants to do what on this council. So before we move forward, again, I want very specific clarification. Are we allowed to speak after public comment, or do we have to wait until council comments? I would like to have that clarification now on all our colleagues.
I mean, as the chair, I just look around. If somebody's got their hand up, I usually call on them.
Is that a policy?
I mean, it's a policy that I chair the meeting.
So is this something that's going to be consistent from here on out? So if any of us have a comment to make after public comment, do we can just do that? Is that, I'm fine with that, that's the case, but I'm asking because doing it meeting by meeting based on how you feel is not acceptable to me. I want a policy in place. So what is the policy?
I mean, the policy is I chair the meeting. I don't really...
So are we allowed to speak after public comment? Yes or no?
I mean, if you...
Actually, point of order, point of order, Mr. President. If we could stop the cross-talk, that would be helpful.
I mean, if...
Thank you.
I think he's got his...
That's actually a violation. If we could just stop the cross-talk, that would be helpful.
So, I mean, that is my answer. I mean, I'm just gonna do what I...
Is that a yes? We can comment after public comment then, separate from our council comment?
I would say yes, I will make a decision as the chair.
That's not acceptable to me, because that leaves room for discrimination. So I'm asking for a specific policy.
Well, it leaves room for discretion.
No, it leaves room for disparate impact, and so I'm asking, either we can or we cannot. That's a simple question, Mr. President.
Everybody can raise their hand and...
And so you'll decide whether or not I can or he can.
I mean, I would do...
So, so my question moving forward is, if this happens again, and I have something to say after public comment, and you tell me no, then what happens? Even though you just allowed two of my colleagues here to do it, this is why we need a policy in place. So if this is something you're gonna do going forward, I embrace that and I'm fine with it. I just do not want a separate set of rules for myself and the rest of my colleagues, and you're not giving me any clarification as a president, as council, on where we are with this. So again, do I have to wait until council comments to speak, or can I speak after public comments if I have something to say? I think that's, I think that's fair.
If there's something burning, please raise your hand.
Absolutely.
All right. Eddie, first...
President, I'm sorry.
Oh, geez.
I know. I thought that, never mind, I'm not going to say it, because I thought you had did that a couple meetings ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
So first readings, consideration for adoption.
I have Resolution Number one sixty-one dash twenty-two-four on first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Wade Trim Inc. for professional engineering services relating to the design and bidding of the Yellowstone Road Storm Sewer, Sanitary Sewer, and Waterline Replacement Project, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number one sixty-two dash twenty-two-four on first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for utility engineering services associated with the replacement and rehabilitation of waterlines on East Fairfax Road, providing compensation therefore, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number one sixty-three dash twenty-two-four on first reading, a resolution approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board, appointed to hear objections to the estimated assessments for a portion of the expensive improvement of streets and parkways, including grading, draining, curbing, paving, repaving, repairing, sweeping or cleaning thereof, removing snow therefrom, and planting, maintaining, and removing shade trees within the city of Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Ordinance Number one sixty-four dash twenty-two-four on first reading, an ordinance determining to proceed with the assessment of a portion of the expensive improvement of streets and parkways, including grading, draining, curbing, paving, repaving, repairing, sweeping or cleaning thereof, removing snow therefrom, and planting, maintaining, and removing shade trees thereon within the city of Cleveland Heights, levying assessments for said purpose, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number one sixty-five dash twenty-two-four on first reading, a resolution approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board, appointed to hear objections to the estimated assessments for a portion of the expensive street lighting within the city of Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Ordinance Number one sixty-six dash twenty-two-four on first reading, an ordinance determining to proceed with the assessment of a portion of the expensive street lighting within the city of Cleveland Heights, levying assessments for said purpose, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number one sixty-eight dash twenty-two-four on first reading, a resolution appointing Julia Weiss as a member of the Architectural Board of Review of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I have Resolution Number one sixty-nine dash twenty-two-four on first reading, a resolution appointing Connor Calder as an alternate member of the Architectural Board of Review of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. First readings only.
I have Ordinance Number one sixty-seven dash twenty-two-four on first reading, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances, section one-eleven-point-two-three, publication of ordinances and resolutions introduced by Councilmember Cobb. I also have Resolution Number one seventy dash twenty-two-four on first reading, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Audrey Hudek as a member of the Led Safe Advisory Board of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
I have Resolution Number one seventy-one dash twenty-two-four on first reading, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Morgan McKay as a member of the Led Safe Advisory Board of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
I have Resolution Number one seventy-two dash twenty-two-four on first reading, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of William Fidel as a member of the Community Improvement Corporation of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
All right, second readings.
I have Resolution Number one thirty-two dash twenty-two-four on second reading, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Drew Herzig as a member of the Arts Commission of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No?
No.
Do we want to do a roll call? Thank you.
Yes. Cobb. Aye. Cuda.
No.
Maddox. Yes. Larson. No. Russell. Petrus. Stane.
Laudricher. Can...
I wasn't recusing.
I think we've been told before we cannot abstain. Is that true?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to vote no.
Posh.
No.
All right, that motion fails.
Next, I have Resolution Number one thirty-three dash twenty-two-four on second reading, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Deidre McPherson as a member of the Arts Commission of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Got some discussion over here, Mr. President.
Pardon me?
I've got some discussion over here, Mr. President.
Oh, go ahead.
I hope that in the case of the remaining people that I've appointed who are qualified, members of this community who have shown dedication, both in the fields that they've engaged in and to the community, I would hope that what I just saw, zero discussion, no rationale, a member of our community for some inexplicable reason was denied the ability to serve our community in a way that they're qualified to do, I would hope that this appointment and the rest of the appointments don't suffer the same fate, especially considering that the example that we just saw, it really, really disturbs me to have seen this. Believe a recent time that the individual came before this council to express some words that maybe a majority of this council might not agree with or like, they expressed a concern. Drew Herzig expressed a concern that him speaking out for what he thought was right would be viewed by members of this council in a light that would lead them to retaliate against him for speaking out. That's what he expressed in that public comment. And what I just saw just now seemed to me, because there is no other rationale given, and perhaps until there is a rationale given which can explain why a qualified appointment would be refused, the... And what I just saw just now seemed to me, because there is no other rationale given, and perhaps until there is a rationale given which can explain why a qualified appointment would be refused, the ability and the opportunity to contribute to his community, um, I can't in confidence express that Mr. Herzig was wrong. And that makes me very sad. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I'm shocked and I'm disappointed that what Mr. Herzig said would happen, happened to him tonight. It was punitive. And now we have people who want to come up and make explanations now, I'm hearing as the mayor is talking, but said absolutely nothing when they just blew through this man and turned down a very dedicated, educated man who was committed to this community. I want to make sure that the residents know that what Drew Herzig said would happen to him, happened here tonight. 100%. They're going to give you a thousand excuses for why they didn't even discuss this man's appointment. They're going to give you a thousand excuses why this did not happen. And I'm going to tell you exactly why it happened to the public. It happened because he dared to speak out and tell this council that he expects their business to be done open in the public and transparently, not in backroom deals and not in private emails. And he was just punished for that tonight. What you're seeing is this council continuing a, a culture of punitive acts based on those who disagree with them. It's why Drew Herzig just was not appointed. It's why I was removed eight months ago from every committee that I was on except for housing, and it's why they're continuing to push things through today. If they make a decision that you do not disagree, you do not agree with them, they're going to find a way to manipulate processes and do exactly what they did tonight. Although I'm disappointed, I'm angry at the same time, I am glad that this happened in public, and I'm glad that the count, that everyone in this public watching both live and in person can see that a good man was just shot down by this council that didn't even have enough respect for him to give him a reason, to give you a reason. And now that they're realizing someone dared to call them out on it, now they may want to talk. But ask why they said nothing during discussions just moments ago when they pushed this through and cast them aside. These, these are the people that you elected. These are the people that you have placed in leadership. They tell you that they're transparent. They tell you they want collaboration, and then they cut down their own citizens simply because they disagree with them. And now they want to give an excuse, some of them, now that they've pushed on because they did it again. I've, I've told you for the last eight months since this council has been its leadership, when they want to do something, they ignore discussion, they ignore everyone else, they just vote and push it through. Now you just saw what they did to me and other members of this council, they just did to a resident tonight. I'm disappointed and it's shameful. It is 100% shameful that what that man said you would do to him, you absolutely did tonight at this meeting. It's up to the city to hold you accountable.
All right. Thank you, councilman. Any other discussion?
I, I don't need a discussion. Anyone could look at the committee of the whole and hear exactly what my discussion was on this appointment. And if you, I didn't think it was necessary to do it again, but if it's necessary for me to do it again, I will. The reason I voted no was for the simple reason, we had just appointed Drew to the Charter Review Commission. We have had many discussions on appointments. Why are we continuing to appoint the same people? So if we just appointed him, I was one of the persons who voted for him for the Charter Review Commission. We have heard from various council people here about keeping and moving on, not appointing the same people all the time, and I was concerned that he had just been appointed to one commission, now we reappointing him to another commission. I asked the mayor in the committee of the whole, how many people applied? He said he didn't know he would get back to me. That's the reason I did not vote for Drew. And it has nothing to do with nothing he said. That is my only reason, and you can see that in the committee of the whole.
Anybody else? All right. So, uh, I believe, Eddie, you gotta remind me.
We have a first and second on resolution number 133.
Three, yeah. Any other discussion on?
Keep in mind that this council committee appointed Judy Miles, and she now sits on planning commission as well. So that, that, that whole excuse is ridiculous.
Councilman.
We have multiple.
You weren't recognized. At least be recognized.
I've never recognized. So, so let's just move on from that. Can we do that? What you just saw was a travesty, and that was a ridiculous excuse.
Well, you don't, you don't, you speak for yourself, which is fine.
No, I speak for the residents who elected me, who just saw this play out and who are fit.
And I'm, and I'm just saying, we're not having a conversation right now.
You're doing it to our residents.
Councilman, we're not having a conversation.
That was wrong.
All I was gonna say was.
Your feelings, I, I'm sure, I've got plenty myself. I'm not going to continue to let you do things and then not be addressed. I don't, you say whatever.
Point of order.
Enough. You said enough, and I wouldn't have to do this if you all respected.
Councilman, that's it.
I wouldn't have to do it if you respected me enough to let me speak when I actually asked. But when you speak over me and you allow DeVita to continue to whisper.
You weren't recognized.
You're hearing why I'm talking. This happens, council president. This is what happens. It's, it's unfortunate, this is the only way I can get you to see me or even hear me.
Thank you.
But that's why it's happening. So why don't you ask your vice president to stop talking over me whenever I have one.
I've called on you several times today already, so I.
Also got my first email from you in eight months in the last week. What, 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 what else does that mean?
Thank you, thank you.
It's a cleanup.
All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 134-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Nathan Mata as a member of the Arts Commission of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I have resolution number 153-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Tony Seis as a member of the Arts Commission of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have ordinance number 152-2024 on second reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an energy savings performance contract with Leopardo Energy and authorizing the financing of the energy conservation improvements under such guaranteed saving contracts, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
A second.
You, uh, might have an amendment here?
Yes.
Thank you, councilwoman.
I move to amend ordinance 152-2024 by substituting the version marked, quote, revised 9-3-24, unquote, for the version that was in council's packet.
All right. It's, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Uh, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passes. Amended version. Sorry.
amended version.
No. Okay. So let's do that now.
I do have a, a first and a second, so.
Okay. So all in favor of the amended version?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And is that the last one? All right.
Do we, do we actually go through that properly on that one? I think we missed one.
Yeah. All right. Next, we have committee reports. Any reports? Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Building Committee met on August 20th. During this meeting, we started to talk through housing relay recommendations from the Racial Justice Task Force with Planning Director Eric Zampf. Also, Director Alan Butler provided an overview to the Committee of Housing Inspections and Programs that Can Assist Homeowners. Housing and Building Committee had another meeting on August 22nd. During this meeting, residents of the Boulevard Neighborhood took the committee on a walking tour and pointed out housing issues. Housing and Building Committee's next meeting is on Tuesday, September 10th at 5:00 PM here on the second floor of City Hall. During this meeting, we're going to continue our review of housing relay recommendations from the Racial Justice Task Force. Also, the Legal Aid Society is joining us so that they can continue their overview of rights and responsibilities of Cleveland Heights tenants and landlords. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Larson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee met August 26th. We discussed traffic studies throughout the city and traffic calming installations with Directors Klink Scale and Zampf and Mayor Sarin. Traffic studies are ongoing. The data in the studies will be used to prioritize installations of traffic calming equipment in the future. We also discussed ordinance 152-2024, which we just voted on, which authorizes the mayor to enter into an energy savings performance contract with Leopardo Energy. Heather Garay and her associate Justin joined the meeting. For Mayor Sarin, bonds will be used to finance this large scope of work. These projects will repair and update many of the city's major infrastructure assets and provide efficiencies that will also make these locations safer and sustainable well into the future. The committee did agree to move the legislation forward for council's consideration. The next meeting of the Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee will be September 16th at 10:00 AM. The Finance Committee will be meeting September 5th at 4:00 PM this week. We will continue our discussion regarding the Racial Justice Task Force recommendation to work with lending institutions to increase the number and amount of loans in African-American communities. Frank Ford, Senior Policy Advisor for the Fair Housing Center for Rights and Research, will be our guest. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Cobb?
Uh, yes, it's getting late, so I'll be brief. The Administrative Services Committee, we met last week, August 29th. I would ask if you're interested in what was discussed to go to our Committee of the Whole meeting where I gave a little report on that. The next committee meeting is scheduled for the last Monday of this month. However, I believe we're going to try and advance that date because the mayor has put forth some additional appointments, and we'd like to get those reviewed and discussed before our next meeting. So please keep an eye on the city's calendar to see if we can get a date before the end of the month to do that. That's all I have.
Councilman Posh? Uh, in the interest of time for the Safety and Health Committee, I'm gonna make that report in our next council meeting.
Okay. Vice President Russell?
Yes, I just want to give an update on the dog park public hearing. I've been working with veterinarian Dr. Scott. He's going to participate in the public hearing. He's very anxious and excited. What he would like for the residents of Cleveland Heights who have any issues or any problems or any questions regarding, uh, anything with the dog parks or dog safety and human safety far as a dog park, please email Addy. He wants to be able to answer those questions with fact. So we have some environmental specialists who have some concern about a dog park, so he wants them to email Addy with you. They will email Addy, and he will ask, make sure those questions are answered during the public hearing. So, uh, and planning and development, right now I have no report, I'm working on something, but I'm not ready to share that right now.
Okay. All right. Last one. Okay. Uh, next we have, oh, anybody else? I'm sorry. No more committee reports. Any old business? Any new business?
I have new business.
All righty.
Uh, in our most recent council meeting under new business, I suggested that council should meet to come to terms with our grievances and to agree upon some expectations for ourselves and how we work to interact with the city administration. I feel this work should both include our expectations and how we work together as council and how we as council feel the city administration, including the mayor, should work with us. I ask for this because numerous people in my circle and those outside have repeatedly categorized our city government as a little dysfunctional. These perceptions regrettably tarnish council. Maybe the perceptions are unfair, but nevertheless, they are currently the talk of the town, and I feel we need to act and work hard on solutions that citizens can see, giving them confidence in our work. So I prepared some information that I've shared with President Kuta and how such a meeting could go through. I think this is the first step of how we can not only have expectations amongst ourselves, but how we can strategically work together and figure out what's strategically important for us and work forward on those things. So I asked council leadership to give us some time as council so we could work through this, but the process has to be meaningful. It may take some time to figure out the right process. I'm happy to help work through that, but really, you're our leaders, and I'd really, really like to see this happen.
Uh, would you like to have that put on the Committee of the Whole meeting, the next Committee of the Whole meeting, as far as, you know, getting a consensus about how we would move forward on?
That would be.
All right. Eddie will, will do that then. Councilman?
For the public's purpose, I just want to let them know that starting in September, I will be holding a series of work sessions, and I'll actually continue to go forward into 2025. These work sessions will encompass any of the projects that I'm currently working on and projects that I have in the pipeline through the city. These projects are going to cover several key areas, and I want to make sure that I'm clear about those tonight so that you have full transparency. Some of these projects cover parks and recreation. Some of them will continue to cover planning and development, safety, community engagement, and public properties. The reason I'm doing these is because I want to make sure that any meetings that I'm having between city staff, the public, any specialists that I bring in, that those meetings are also recorded, that you have the opportunity to listen in and see the insight that I'm gaining. Why am I doing this? I'm doing this because I found it impossible to work with my colleagues on simple pieces of legislation, let alone community engagement projects. I'm doing this because I feel left out in many cases in terms of some of the major conversations that I've been having on council over the last two years and eight months. I'm doing this because even on some of my colleagues on some of my committees have been meeting outside of those committees without me and discussing topics of those committees only for me to show up and sit there and just watch this production. This has to stop. I want to make sure that I'm driving transparency, and I also want to make sure that you can hold me accountable, which means those projects, those ideas, those things that I told you I worked, I'm working on, I want to make sure that you can see exactly where I am in the timeline and with the pipeline with those projects. I would love to work with my council colleagues. I would love to do so transparently, but I cannot do it in a room with people who do not hear me, who do not see me, who refuse to work with me collaboratively. And so until I can do that, these work sessions, along with the administration, will be aired in public. All of the projects that I've touched on the last two years, some of which were in planning and development before I was completely removed off the committee, not just as a leader, but completely removed off the committee, even though I had eight years of experience there. I was completely removed off of administrative services, even though I have 15 years of leadership in administrative services, HR, and training. You gotta ask yourself, why was I completely removed in the middle of those projects? And so this is my way of making sure that those things continue to move forward. I can't explain why council leadership did it, and at this point, I don't even know what they would tell you. But I do know I cannot continue to let the way and the culture of this council stop me from doing the work. And so I'm letting this council know that starting in September, I'm holding work sessions with the administration, with organizations in and outside of this city and in the county so that I can get these projects done. They will be open. I, I look forward to my council colleagues either attending or, or watching online if they have any questions, but this is the only way that I can work. I don't receive emails. I don't receive e-mail responses, and when I show up to meetings, I am not heard.[1665.21] I don't receive your responses, and when I show up to meetings, I am not heard. Things are pushed through without discussion, and it has to stop. The residents want me to continue this work, and they want it to be done transparently. And even though many of these meetings don't have to be made public, I want to make sure that they are recorded and they are seen, and every word that is spoken in those conversations when I make these decisions, I want you to be able to see every part of those conversations. I don't feel like that has happened, and this is my way of righting that ship. And so this is my way of letting council know today, these work sessions are gonna start in two weeks, and they're gonna continue to move forward over a myriad of topics. And I look forward to anyone who has any questions about that as I start that process, but I want to make sure that no one feels like they're being blindsided as these are scheduled. I'm telling you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember comments? Looking right, I'm looking left. Oh, there we go.
Sure, so earlier, we had a number of speakers from the Coventry Peace Campus come in asking for council support for them to acquire that building, and I'd like to publicly state that I do support that. And looking back at news articles from 2018 when this occurred, it is pretty clear that the library understood what it was getting itself into when they took on this project. An article that Tom Jewell wrote February 6, 2018 quotes the library board president as stating, "We saw this as an opportunity to protect and preserve something we felt was very important to the community." The library made a promise to this community that they would preserve that building, and I think that they need to do everything within their power to make sure that that continues to be the case. We have Member Pash on our city council right now, and he was president of the school board, and I'm looking at a press release that the school board put out there, and Member Pash is quoted as saying, "We're sad to let the property go, but the schools need to focus on educating our children. We are thrilled that the library has taken this on. It will be great for the community." The library director, Nancy Levin, was quoted as saying, "We are very happy to take on the project so the property can continue to be used for the public good." Again, I urge all of my fellow council members to join me in supporting the peace campus efforts and urging the library board to find a way to get that property into the peace campus, and so it can continue to be operated as the facility for nonprofits and arts organizations that it is. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Thank you. After canvassing in the morning, I spent some time at Cumberland yesterday afternoon. The weather was perfect for the last day of the Cumberland season. While Cumberland is now closed, people should now be able to swim at the high school. There are few issues that have as much community support. As a reminder, in November 2022, council passed legislation authorizing and directing the mayor to negotiate a facility use agreement with the school district, and earlier this year, this council allocated funds to pay for lifeguards. I hope that the administration rises to the occasion and fulfills not only the clear wish of residents, but also the lawfully passed legislation of the Cleveland Heights City Council. Thank you.
Councilman Maddox?
To our residents, I know you've heard a lot tonight about many issues from the pool on down to the Coventry Peace Campus, but it still doesn't change the fact that you need to place on the demand to make sure that this council does all of its business in public. And right now, we still don't even have an email policy that states that we should be doing our emails from city emails. And so I would ask my colleagues and ask the residents to reach out to my colleagues and say, hey, I want you to do business in public. I want you to communicate through city emails, not your private emails, and I don't want you to hold committee meetings or anything else in private. We expect to see all of the discussions that are happening. This is accountability time. I'm continuing to ask these residents to watch what they do, not just what they say. It is critical at this point. You just saw it tonight. You just saw it happen to a resident. You've seen it happen to members of this council. Now it's time to really ask yourself if what they're telling you is what you're seeing and if that's lining up. I'm disappointed again tonight, but it's accountability time. So again, I want you to make this council do its business in the light of day using city emails where we can all hear those discussions, and if that is impossible for them to do, I think you should ask them why. Ask them why they are putting ethics legislation away when we have no policies and processes that anyone is following, which is how we ended up in this point in the first place. We are avoiding our own issues while pointing out everything else that's happening across this city, from the libraries to the pools to the school district, even what the mayor is doing, but we can't even get simple transparency on this council. We can't get honesty on this council. We can't get collaboration on this council. This council loves to have accountability for everyone but itself, and it is time for this council to hold itself accountable. That only happens when the residents speak up. Tell this council you want to know what's happening in this city, and you want its business to be done in daylight and not in their private emails. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Yes, please. Council Vice President?
Oh, boy, election season has started. Well, I just wanted to give something to the residents. It always comes up in meetings and different venues that council have no idea what they're doing. People don't understand government. People don't know exactly how to run committees. They don't know any of these things. And it dawned on me that in March, Director Thomas and the mayor requested that Council President Kuta and myself do almost an essay to be focused and featured in the Focus magazine as the new top leadership. That was scrapped, but we did the essay anyway. And the essay was about what our goals were. It was about what we felt and what we thought about the new form of government. It talked about what, who we are as a person and personally. It had, hmm, 20, it had, I'm telling you what's the essay. 16 questions, in-depth questions, that we had to actually answer, and we were instructed by Director Thomas that we needed to do this so it could go in the Focus magazine. It never happened, but so that you all know what my answers were and that you judge if we know or from my answers, if I know anything about government, I make copies that you can take with you so you can read for yourself. Any person who's listening, who want a copy of the essay that we were asked to give to be featured in the Focus magazine, feel free to email me at my city email address or my Council Russell email address, because it's not city business, it's my own essay. I will make sure you get a copy of it. I will make sure Thomas Jewell get one as well, and all the council members who did not get a chance, the opportunity to see it, and hopefully, President Kuta, you'll share yours as well.
I'd love to.
Thank you so very much.
We worked really hard on that. Any other council comments? Okay, well, it's time for the President's report. First of all, let me say thank you to the Leopardo group here for hanging with us all these hours, and I'm very excited about what you're going to be doing from this building here to the service department. I think this is gonna make a tremendous impact on our infrastructure and the health of our workers, so again, thank you so much for that. Lastly, and quickly, you know, we had a lot of speakers tonight on the pool and on Coventry Peace Campus, and the common thread between those is the chilly relationship between the entities involved, and I'm talking about chilly before these issues even came up. I don't think there's, it doesn't bother me, at least you must notice this, I don't have a problem when people disagree. I mean, that, there's times when I see people taking things so personally, and it's just a disagreement about, about policy, but this, in those two instances, very, very chilly relationships preceded the actual issues, and I would just say that I think these are important issues in we, you know, I don't want to sound corny, but we need to work together, listen to each other, and put aside the personal feelings and just focus on the issues and how they're gonna affect the community. And with that, I adjourn this meeting.